I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil, before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the robust public participation in this meeting this evening.
I've said it's the same cast of characters. We're very happy to see our administrators here as always. I just want to wait for Jonathan.
Yes. With the agenda, I'm filling out a sent yet. Item number, put under discussion, item number 14.
Okay. Do you have to add an agenda?
No, I don't think we have to add it, but we want to maybe note they'll have a discussion about flood insurance.
Okay. All right, so we will have a motion to accept the agenda for this evening, and Chris just wanted me to note the one thing that we're going to have a discussion about flood insurance under item 14 does not require an action, so we don't really need to add an agenda item, but just for the record, we'll talk about flood insurance under item 14. So can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second. It's John, I think it was just a hair faster than Ron. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My vote. And we begin as always with our superintendent's report. Over to you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. A number of important things and exciting things to report on. First and foremost, of course, is the success of the bond referendum last Tuesday. Certainly, we are pleased with the results, but there's little time to celebrate because another layer of work has already begun in helping these projects become a reality. Our applications have already been submitted to SED, and we will eagerly await their approval. As we discussed throughout the entire bond proposal development process, that there's a lengthy window of time to expect to hear back from SED. Of course, Beverly's office and our architects and engineers will stay atop those applications, but once they are received, we then begin the RFP and bidding process with the objective of beginning work in the beginning of the summer. So we certainly thank the community for their support and give you our word that we're going to work tirelessly to ensure that these projects are completed well and certainly deliver the quality that we would expect here in the Irvington School District. Moving on, last Thursday night, we had a wonderful program in the campus theater. Thanks to the Rivertown parents, we were fortunate enough to welcome Jacques Steinberg. Jack is a former New York Times journalist and author of The Gatekeepers. I have to say, we had a wonderful turnout to hear his thoughts and experiences related to the college admissions process. He provided a great deal of insight to parents and some students that were in attendance. I also have to say that he had a few nice things to say about the Irvington schools being a local resident and having friends that reside in the community. But again, thanks to the Rivertown parents for making this possible. On a related note, I would like to add that we are going to use The Gatekeepers for my Fall Book Club. The PTSA is going to be announcing dates in the near future, but we're anticipating late November book club meetings. We are headed into homecoming with events beginning tomorrow. We have evening sporting events under the lights with soccer, field hockey, and of course Friday, the homecoming parade and pep rally and football game on Saturday night. We certainly hope folks are able to join us and celebrate that bulldog pride. I do want to acknowledge our Irvington High School Drum Line, who performed at the Village's Rocktober Fest on Saturday. They kind of opened the day by playing a few cadences that truly warmed the stage for the performers that were to follow them. So we certainly are proud of our students, and we got a great photo of those that participated on the Facebook page. Also in the music department, we had a number of students that we just learned were named all area state and approximately 20 students in the area of band, orchestra, and chorus. We have, should have a proud parent sitting at the board table this evening. So congratulations to all those folks involved. We're certainly proud of our students' talent and their accomplishments, and those students are also recognized on our website Facebook page and will be in this week at the end of the week as well. Our students and faculty last year collaborated to raise money for breast cancer awareness and research. Last year, their efforts raised $1,600. This year, they are collaborating again, and that is not only the IFA, but it's the High School Student Council and the Community Service Club. We have a number of folks that are going to be walking in Manhattanville on the 19th, and then we're going to have our second annual walk right here at Ole Track on the 29th from 3:30 to 5:30. There's a link that is posted on the Facebook page and will be included in this week as well to enable folks to be able to support our students and teachers in this effort. We have some other developments that I certainly would like to turn to Dr. Core to talk to this evening. The first being elementary report card work that is ongoing.
Sure. So about, over a year ago, we met with the report card, the Elementary Report Card Committee, and we talked about the shift from the Common Core standard, there were report cards not reflecting the Common Core standards. So a year ago in June, we met and we talked about the complications of teaching to the Common Core and not having the standards on the report card reflect that. At that point, we felt that we weren't ready to make the shift just yet. The shift hadn't really been made completely by New York State. We knew the new test was coming, but last year, we talked about the need that the teachers were having a harder and harder time using the standards that were on the report card because they did not reflect the Common Core. So last year, a K-5 committee met along with Randy, actually Joyce joined us at the end of the year and Eileen Casey, and we revamped the report card so that it would more accurately reflect the standards. So it's still a standards-based report card, so when I say that, it's still a 1, 2, 3, and 4 scale. So the report card in and of itself is not changing so much as some of the detail or what we call the competencies. So in other words, key ideas and details or craft and structure, the actual things that you would read in the Common Core will now be on the report card. So it should actually be to everyone's advantage because we're going to be able to align what we're teaching in our classroom with what's actually being reported on the report card.
I understand the thinking was that you were going to roll this out with this period.
Yes, so we would roll out the new report card, the same as we did previously, which is to roll it up right prior to a report card reporting time. And there'll be a parent guide that will actually go with it so that parents can understand what it is and what the changes are. I don't think, you know, we've talked about it, I don't think that we anticipate a lot of concern because I think it's just more going to be more accurate to what their teachers are teaching in their classroom.
I didn't realize that reporting needed to match Common Core standards. Is this something that most districts are looking at doing, revamping their report cards to match the Common Core standards?
Yes, because the Common Core standards are what's being taught. So let's, I'll give you an example. So if the teachers are focused in their classroom and they're collecting data in their classroom about a student's ability to collect text evidence, to share text evidence when they're reading, well, that's what you want the report card to say because you want to say, this is what I'm teaching your child, this is what your child can do, or this is where we see your child's growth. So the Common Core standards give us a common way to discuss it. The other really helpful thing is the standards, if you remember from the presentation last year, they go, they're very consistent through the grades, and so a parent should be able to really see what that growth looks like because we're all teaching to the same standards, just moving that, progressing through higher levels. So.
Do you have a prototype already created that we could, I'm just thinking, send to parents in advance and sort of say, this is how it's going to change?
I would say that we wouldn't recommend that. You need a context for it, and the greatest context is really the teacher voice with the report card. So I think it would just raise questions that I'm not sure would be helpful for a parent in the absence of the teacher or the parent guide.
What about just sending them a notice saying that your report cards will be coming out next week and they're going to be different?
Well, we're going to be, yes, in November, we're going to do a parent evening, and that will be an opportunity to talk about Common Core and the report card, and then the parent guide will go with it, which will explain the reason for the change as well as what you should be looking for. And again, the greatest strength is the teacher voice, who can then explain and share student work with how their child's work reflects the Common Core.
So the communication strategy is really around the parent evening, then?
Both, the parent guide.
And the parent guide.
And the evening. You know, we know, our evening events can be mixed. You never know, you know, how many people you'll get, so we hope to get many, but we certainly want to be able to provide documentation for all those that don't come.
So how does, how is the parent guide going to be distributed? Is it?
The parent guide would go home with every child.
And just, I'm sorry, this is report card for which grades?
K through 5.
K as well.
Yes.
Can't remember whether my kids got report cards.
They did.
It wasn't much.
They did.
Several iterations of report cards about. Can we see copies, just like compare the new and the old, just so we, sooner than, rather than later?
Sure.
Just so we understand what's going on?
Absolutely.
And was there a committee that did this? Can you explain?
The K-5 committee.
Yeah, how the committee was composed?
Sure, it's teachers from every grade level. So this isn't a new idea, you know, we've been, we've had a report card committees on and off in place for at least seven or eight, maybe even nine years at this point, when we first made, I'm trying to think when we made the initial change to the new report card. So the committee is a representation, it's the building administrators along with representation, teacher representation from every grade level.
And is there a thought to doing something similar to the middle school or high school?
Not at this time.
And this kind of goes to the question of, is the Common Core, I don't know, is that enough for us, is the question? I mean, do we want to stake our entire educational strategy to just doing the Common Core as opposed to thinking about, because I think that's what you're doing here, right? As opposed to thinking about some, do we want to be giving or expecting more out of our kids than that? And was there any thought given to that as part of this process? Because I think we're just, we're really teaching increasingly with the report cards now and tests. We really are pretty single-mindedly, it seems, teaching to the Common Core in at least the elementary grades. And, you know, it just raises the question of what is it that distinguishes Irvington or another well-funded district as opposed to every other district in the country, you know? And as you know, I've made the point that we pay a lot more, we have the social economics that demand a lot more. How do we, how do we square those things?
This is the question of how do we set standards beyond the Common Core?
Basically.
And reflect that.
Should we? And is there, has there been thought given to that, or if not? I know it's kind of also kind of relates to our goal setting in a way, but.
That's an interesting point. I mean, it's almost like, you know, we talk about teaching to the test, and we want our kids to not only do well on the Common Core test, you know, the state test, we want them to develop the foundation that's going to make them strong learners and, you know, 21st century skills and do well in life. And I guess, you're right, I mean, I never thought about it, but it's true. It's like if this is, if everything comes back to just that Common Core learning standards or, you know, is that really who we want to be?
So I would say it doesn't. I would say the Common Core learning standards are fairly rigorous and they're really well-articulated. So I think there's nothing wrong with the Common Core standards. Is that our, do we stop there? No, we don't. I guess I would share two points that I think are incredibly useful as we, as we develop our curriculum and our learning around this. One of the things that we're seeing is that the Common Core, or just having standards, forget the Common Core, having a set of standards gives us a way to articulate what a student needs to know at one grade level versus the next. It opens the door for teachers to differentiate their instruction. One of the most complicated things about differentiating your instruction is actually knowing what to differentiate. So now, if we have a really strong reader, we can go ahead in those standards, and I could look at a fourth grader who's really, who's very bright and very capable, and I can go ahead and I can actually look to see what will the expectations be in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade for this child? So I can start to, I have a way to differentiate my instruction. That's really been complex for not just us, for all school districts. The second piece that I would share is that we're broadening and expanding the learning in different ways. So through habits of mind, through teaching thinking. So for me, our greatest strength will be if we can look at our curriculum and our practice and say, we are teaching kids to think. That would be, that's what will set us apart, making sure that we have critical thinking as part of our practice. Asking kids to use those habits of mind that we know are life skills, those aren't just in the classroom skills. So I think where we see the rigor is in the expansion of our thinking about what kids need to know. It's not the content, because we know, we'll never be able to teach all the content in the world as more and more information comes out, but what we can do is teach kids to think and think deeply.
But are you saying that that, that's, I mean, there's vertical augmentation in what they're doing in terms of kids being able to go beyond their grade level in the Common Core, and that makes sense. But are you also talking about horizontal augmentation in terms of teaching things not necessarily outside the grade level but beyond the Common Core, like, I don't know, habits of mind or what have you is? Or then there's also the question of science and social studies, which are not strictly speaking in the Common Core, right?
Well, they will be. So as soon as the next generation's science standards are adopted and the new social studies framework is built out, they will be. And I think the commonality is thinking. And so we are doing that. In this reiteration of the report card, we actually talked about whether we should put, instead of our, we call them behaviors that promote learning, which really in essence are, some of them are habits of mind. That's really what we want kids to be thinking about. What do I have to know and think about as a learner to be successful? So the habits of mind is a pretty, it links to our dispositions that we're working with all kids, K through 12, on developing. So I would say that that is how we're expanding the rigor. I also, I mean, I could give you other examples through like our global citizenship initiative, like I think that's another example of rigor that goes beyond the Common Core.
But are these in the report cards?
Well, the, so the behaviors that promote learning, yes, that's part of the report card. So our goal would be, once we're a little bit more steeped in that K-5, we would like to see that reflected in the report card. So there are some there now, but they're not named exactly as the habits of mind, they're called behaviors that promote.
Maybe it would be a good idea, once we have the sample of the report card where we can actually see the language that's been used to describe the different, the different levels, right, one through four, that then we could actually continue that debate, discussion.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just to have something tangible to react to might be.
I have, but one more thing is, I guess it's just kind of taking a step back. I'm almost, I just, I'm afraid. I feel like our teachers have so much on their plate right now with, you know, the Common Core and, and like, you know, we're, we're giving them resources and professional development, so they, everything's changed for them, and it's a lot. And then on top of that, to do the report card, I mean, are we asking too much of them too soon?
I guess if I'm a teacher and now my report card is saying I'm assessing one thing, but in my classroom, I'm teaching and assessing something else, for me, that's even harder because now this is, I'm teaching, I'm teaching to these standards, I'm teaching this thinking, and now my report card has a different set of criteria on it. So I'm not sure how that makes it.
Harder to translate.
Well, and you actually have to translate.
Right.
So.
Okay, so there was a second thing, I think, right?
That was a big update.
Yes.
And so the other is with respect to a complication that's been identified with transcripts for our senior students at the high school, and there's been an extensive amount of work that's been underway over the last few days from high school administration, Dave, Deb, and Guidance, and Dr. Core.
And Jesse.
Yeah, and of course Jesse Lipinski. So with that said, I will defer to you again to explain what the situation is and where we are.
And at some point, I may defer to Dave. So we identified that we had a, I mean, I'm going to call it a computer glitch. We ran a data process that unfortunately affected or skewed our data. It shifted our data, and it was only data from one year. And it happened to be the year our current seniors, in their ninth grade year, their report cards were accurate. So all the data that we currently have in our files, those report cards were accurate. But at the end of last year, I guess the best way I can explain it is almost like a wrong button was pushed, a wrong process was run, and as a result, it took in data that it should not have. It's called an average routine data run. And it took in data, it pulled in data that it should not have, and as a result, it changed our transcripts.
And it would be the RIC or?
No, we run our own data system, so no, we ran the, we ran the average routine ourselves, but we didn't know that it actually had run on the 2011-12 school year. And as a result, through our processes of checking and auditing our report cards and looking at our current ninth graders, we were able to see that there was a misalignment.
Current 12th graders, you mean?
Current 12th graders, but their ninth grade report cards.
Which was 11 year, 11-12.
Right. So we were able to identify that we had, that our data wasn't aligned. So our ninth grade report card said one thing, but our transcript said something different. And so we were fortunate because in that process of auditing our report cards, we were able to identify it certainly prior to kids needing it for college. And Dave's been, and Deb and Jesse have been diligent in trying to correct it and.
I don't mean to, because I think that, you know, stuff happens.
Yep.
But that, we're not in, as my kids, you know, we're not in early admissions now where transcripts have been sent to schools?
Yes, so we have, so we have a handful of kids, I want to say at this point, four kids, who as a result of early decision, needed their report cards accurate. So we've checked those, we've made any corrections that were necessary, and those students are good to go.
Were there situations, so I think from the community standpoint, you know, there was a mistake, we caught it, but was the mistake-filled transcript sent to colleges?
For our students that are applying right now?
Well, any students.
Current seniors?
Any students.
So, oh, so at this point, our current seniors who are applying to school, no. Every, any, any transcript, and it's four, that have been provided or sent out were accurate and have been checked and double-checked. At this point, we're resolving our current seniors who are on the cusp of needing those transcripts now.
Oh, you're saying it affected other classes other than the seniors?
And that's where, right.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
Yes, so we definitely affected our seniors.
Right.
And we're looking for.
Now you're going backwards.
And now we'll go backwards. But first, we're going to resolve our current seniors so that we can make any corrections.
Did it affect last year's seniors?
So that's what I'm saying. So we're, right now, we're correcting our current seniors to get our transcripts accurate, and then we're going to work backwards to see what the status is for our other students. Here's what I will say, if it affected our other seniors, it, last year's seniors, it did not affect every, all the data that we sent to colleges during the application process was correct. Everything we did last year was correct. This data run was done at the end of the year. So there was no impropriety, there were no questions, no one got incorrect information, and then accepted a student to a college based on wrong data.
I'm confused, is it, is it a, is it a problem with the calculation of the average or is it the reporting of the individual grades for classes that?
Say that again, John?
Well, transcript is a list of classes you took and the grades you got, right?
Yes.
And credits or whatever. But there's also a, is the problem that the wrong grades or the wrong courses or the wrong credits was, or is it that the calculation of the average was wrong?
The calculation was incorrect.
Cumulative GPA.
From ninth, from the ninth grade report card, from the ninth grade year.
Which affects their total GPA.
Exactly. So subsequently, all the years were fine, it was just that one year.
And how much, can you just give us a sense of how, what big of, how big of a difference it was? I mean, what was the?
Dave, then I'm going to look to you for.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Just hold out your hands this big, this big.
That's the right answer.
You know, it's, we're talking about their ninth grade year, and for different kids, some of their averages then made their scores go up a little bit and some went down a little bit. So from a GPA standpoint, it might be a .01 or a .05. I mean, there could have been a little bit larger, but that's for one year. So in many of the cases that we saw, it almost balanced itself out, but the bottom line is that we spotted this. I think Dr. Core highlighted that we got on top of this right in front of needing to get these transcripts out to colleges.
When they get, when they get, I assume they get this in Irvington, Naviance allows you to put in your GPA and your SAT scores, and you get these neat scatter plots of how people in your school did. Does this, did that affect, were the wrong numbers in Naviance?
When you put it into Naviance, I would assume that it's comparing to past and historical data, so I'd have to find that out. In terms of comparing to past data, that past data was accurate. So we're talking about an isolated case.
But a current senior would not necessarily have.
So Dr. Core referred to three or four students, four students that we've already been able to go in and correct. In those cases, we saw a total GPA swing of a .01 or a .02. So I don't want to minimize that, John. I mean, I think we should be accurate, and that's certainly what we're shooting for, but I don't think that it was huge swings to the point where when students are looking at colleges, they're all of a sudden going to get a sense of acceptance or denial that would skew their process in ways that now with accurate information, they would need to go back and rethink their list of colleges and things like that.
And did they receive these inaccurate GPAs or did the students?
Well, the inaccurate GPAs have been posted on the site, so when students have looked at them, many of our students had transcripts and were looking at it from past years. So in those cases, you know, it depends on how a student is compiling that information, but certainly the most recent transcript that we had posted is the one that we recognized had the inaccuracy.
I just, the, the one thing I'm still not getting is, was the, you keep saying it took incorrect data. So did it pull data that wasn't there, or did it pull data from somewhere? I don't understand what that means.
Data set is incomplete, so it pulled from an incomplete data set. So in other words, instead of pulling all four quarters, it didn't pull all four quarters.
So you're, you're saying it took a year average, then it pulled in some cases less than four quarters? So it didn't take anyone else's grades?
No, 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 no.
I didn't know what that meant when you're like, it didn't.
No, it did not take anyone else's.
Okay, so they just took, it was kind of an incomplete average, in other words.
Exactly.
So it took like, it was like your third, third quarter grade instead of your full year.
It actually counted, it actually counted certain numbers multiple times, but all the students.
Had they known that by then?
Which is why I think Dave was saying some were up and some were down.
Yeah.
That's how you did.
And I guess the key thing is, is that the, the data run happened at a point in time, so that's why it happens to the kids going forward and can be corrected where information is distributed and is not relevant to kids who've already graduated.
So I guess in short, in sum, Dave sent an email this evening to the school community indicating that Naviance was going to be taken down for some maintenance, and I'm sorry, not Naviance, the Home Access Center is going to be taken down for some maintenance, and then high school staff, working with support from the RIC, are going to go back and make these corrections. Another audit will be performed, of course, to ensure everything is accurate, and then by the end of the week, we'll bring the system back up live that will have the corrected transcripts that will then certainly be able to be utilized for our students that are applying for college in time for their applications. Separate communication went to the seniors of Irvington High School as well, speaking more specifically to what the issue is, and certainly the high school staff is prepared to speak with anybody and address any concerns that may surface.
That communication also went out today?
That went out today as well.
So this is a discussion that Mr. Whitney and I had offline. Can you help me understand why the students weren't notified immediately that this was an issue rather than waiting until today? Because I had pushed last week that, you know, I felt, why not let them know there's an issue so they can be suitably careful with the numbers they have if it matters? You know, I think if I were in the middle of a college process, and I'm quite close to somebody who is, you know, I would want to know, I would want to know if my number's going to change at all.
So I guess.
Given by hundreds of.
I guess the best example that I could come up with on this, and we shared today, is, you know, I don't think that Home Depot announced their problem the minute that they found out. I think they probably did some research and some homework. I think they probably did some research and some homework to figure out what it really was, and how big it was, and what the correction was. So, you know, we talked a lot about how soon, but to release something, but the reality isn't. I just want to acknowledge Dave and Deb and Jesse and the guidance counselors, but, you know, a lot of things stopped in these last few days to ensure that we understood the problem, that we understood where it came from. And there was a lot of speculation along the way until we could actually drill down and figure that out with the help of the Regional Information Center. So had we provided that information any earlier, I think, I think two things, I think people would have been panicked, and quite honestly, people would have been calling, we would have had nothing, we wouldn't have had sufficient information to provide them. So I think from our standpoint, and we talked about this in depth, we felt like we had a responsibility to be able to explain and assure people that what was going on was something that A, we could fix in time so that nobody was compromised, and that we needed to make sure that was not an impropriety, that we actually, that in fact it was a data run that created the problem. So I think we felt we were acting very responsibly by not sharing that. Again, Deb and Dave and the guidance counselors and Emily were carefully, carefully, not only making sure and checking each student, but they know who was applying early. So at no, there was no point where we felt that we were compromising one of our students. And I think you'd know, we would never do that. So I'm not sure, I think we are not sure what would have come from actually making an announcement that we could not be prepared.
I think there, you know, I felt that people would benefit from knowing that there's an uncertainty and they're not knowing, and, you know, that I felt we had a responsibility to, if a key input into people's college process was open to change, I think, you know, yes, it might produce some anxiety, but it was, and we still have told them, and we don't have the answer, right? I think Dave's email says three or four days or something like that. We seem to be willing to do it now. But, you know, I think that these sorts of things should be, and I felt that last week, should be told right away. I just don't see a reason to delay that is very coherent to me. And I haven't, you know, so if that's your explanation, fine, but I did want to hear it, but, you know, I'm not comfortable with that decision.
Okay. All right, I think we, you're done?
I am done.
That was a long superintendent update. We now move to our Buildings and Grounds, our committee reports, and I think Maria is going to be providing both of those tonight, the Building and Grounds Committee Report and also the curriculum.
Yes, Buildings and Grounds. We met on September 30th to review the five-year facility plan. We discussed that next year is our year that we legally have to have an outside architect come in and review our facilities and update that plan. We made sure that all the items that were in the bond were included in the facilities' plans in the proper years. We altered perhaps some of the items in different years. Also, some of the items were being paid for out of the general operating budget, and that had to be reflected in the five-year plan as well.
And you said next year, do you mean next year as in next school year?
Next school year, yes. Next school year.
1516.
1516. We are legally required every five years to have an outside company, I'm sorry, an architect come in and review our facilities. I'm sorry, I just, not feeling well. I think that's really, you know, we discussed some of the items, some of the items are on that list that we feel will never get done because we don't think it needs to get done, but it needs to be on the list because I think it came out of a prior architect or some prior recommendation. Some of the items that are on the list will probably come off the list after the bond. Now, well, we met prior to the bond being approved. Now that it is approved, some of the items will, we won't need to do because of the bond.
Uh-huh.
Right, is that a fair, accurate? Okay. And that was really it, we only discussed the five-year facilities plan. And did we even schedule a meeting for the next time? Did not. We met too many times last year, so I don't think we need to really meet this year. Just kidding.
Does it make sense, does, do all the board members have the current five-year plan?
Well, we approved it in the June meeting, which we're legally required, well, I'm sorry, we didn't approve it. It was on our agenda, we have to-
Well, last year, the last one we did was for the 13-14 year. So this information that the Buildings and Grounds Committee reviewed, and once it's finalized, will then be incorporated into the school report cards, which will be presented to the full board later on in the year.
I see.
That happens in June, correct?
It will happen sometime in the spring. It doesn't need to wait till June.
Well, we approved it, well, in other words, in one of our agendas this past June is when we saw the one from last year, the five-year.
Right.
Facility report.
Can you explain the five-year plan? Does that create an obligation? Is it a set of recommendations, or are we obligated to follow that plan? Or what's the, what does that, what does that plan mean?
It's basically a outline of work that we believe needs to be done to our facilities within the next five years.
Or the architect believes.
The architect, and then we've added some things in between because the architect only comes in every five years. For example, like five years ago, well, four years, in 2010, the architect did not put on there that East Field needed to be done. So we added that at the time, that it needed to be in there. So it's a constantly evolving document, depending on as situations surface. And then as we complete items, they are removed from that list.
But do we then budget? We budget, basically, this is worked into the cap, the part of the budget.
Some of the items are budgeted, and some of the larger items, like when we entered the fields on there, that would be a capital project.
Sounds like it's a non-binding document.
Yes. It's just a working document.
But it's at least a guide to what we want to be doing, even if it might quibble on some of the details of the architect.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Next committee report.
That would be, and Robin's going to help me out on this because I've misplaced my notes from that. We met last week, we discussed the mission statement, kind of the purpose of this committee. Prior to the meeting, I had done a little research. It seems like different school districts have this committee, but they use it in different ways. We kind of agreed that this was going to be the mission of this committee. Chris and Rena would provide updates. I'm sorry, I'm going to lose words right now, I'm not feeling well.
You want me to jump in, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
We kind of viewed it as we would be the conduit for them, keeping us informed as to what the priorities were and what they were focusing on throughout the year. And so kind of the way it works in Buildings and Grounds, where they funnel through you guys, and then they would initially start by advising us as to the, kind of where their focus was and what's important. What's the matter?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, uh-huh. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine.
All concerned.
So that was our, we first discussed the mission statement. We didn't really have much of an agenda because that was our first meeting. We discussed that we were going to meet every six weeks for the balance of the year. We kind of discussed a few items for our next agenda. We talked about social studies and science, about that for social studies, the framework has been adopted by New York State, but the standards have not. And for science, I believe the word Rena used was, there was a beautiful set of, there was a beautiful written framework, but it has not yet been adopted. So we're still in a limbo stage, and this is specifically K-5, right?
No, the next-gen science standard is a K-12.
Oh, so that was, okay, so-
They're developed.
But for, but for K-5, we discussed that come November, you guys were having a meeting to discuss every grade-
Social studies.
Right, social studies. Every grade has two teachers that appoint people who become kind of like the leaders in a particular subject for that grade. And come November, they're going to be reviewing social studies K-5, and November is their first meeting.
Actually, December, we moved it to December after report card. When we went in with the date to the teachers, they asked if it could be after conferences.
Okay, so that was a change.
And in social studies, we also talked about just how we were one of the last districts, but we've now moved to time, thematic approach instead of chronological approach.
No, the opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, 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 right.
Our global-
We moved to chronological, we used to do thematically, but you had indicated that makes it easier for cross-disciplinary work.
At the high school level, though.
Right, and that's at the high school level, but that was part of the social studies discussion, too.
Right.
That's how, like, you mean individual history courses are taught?
For example, global, ninth and 10th grade, now it's going to be taught chronologically as opposed to thematic, correct?
Yes.
And then the other, the only other item that we discussed was, and came out of our board retreat, was board responsibilities in approving curriculum and textbooks, and we got into a conversation about approval of textbooks and kind of past practice and going forward.
Can I ask you, I didn't really understand when you, the mission discussion. Can you just run that, it just didn't really make sense. Maybe because I was concerned about how you were feeling, and so I stopped listening, but-
So basically, Robin and I are going to be the conduits to this board. Any, any, we didn't really get into specifics. Well, one of the things we discussed was professional development, for example, for the staff this year. But for example, last year, using an example, like there was a review of English, ninth through 12th grade. Any, anything that they're working on curriculum-wise, any new initiative, anything that they're investigating, it could be anything, we're going to have meetings about it, and then we'll come back to the board and report on. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah.
And then, and then, look, we also talked about, you know, on our retreat, it was brought up that New York State also has the boards' approved curriculum and textbooks. So we talked about how would that work in practice, and, you know, what other people are doing, and how that might play into the curriculum committee as well. So we talked about that as well.
And how about the board, how about the other way, right? The board, you know-
You would contact us-
The board, or you have concerns.
Likewise, we could add items to the agenda.
Or we could talk about it here, and then you could, maybe more appropriately, and then it could be added to the agenda. And then back and forth.
I think the spirit of the conversation, John, was that we wanted to utilize the committee as a tool to keep the board more informed and engaged in the variety of work that's occurring across the district, to be able to provide ongoing updates about the projects that are ongoing in the district. So we'd be able to make sure that the board and the community is more engaged by just providing yet another forum for this type of discussion. We acknowledge that it is a two-way street, that there is that opportunity, of course, for board and committee members to add items to the agenda. But we wanted it to be a dialogue and use it as really a conduit for communication in and around curriculum and instruction.
My only feedback is that some of the discussion can get kind of technical and maybe a little bit complicated, so I think you guys should feel free to kind of prompt the discussion and then turn it to Rena for more, you know, color, you know, because you don't have to be the ones that are sharing all of the rich detail behind a curriculum initiative. You can just simply say, this is what we talked about, here's what I think about it, and Rena, can you kind of flesh it out some more for the rest of the board? If that's okay? Because that, because putting you on the hook to explain some of this curriculum stuff.
Oh, no, just like we did in Buildings and Grounds, we went to the-
Exactly.
The explanations, absolutely. We'll be throwing Rena under the bus, no problem.
You'll become as good at this as you were at the Dust Bowl.
Exactly.
This raises, I guess, two specific issues, just maybe to send back. One is, can we find out more about the social, what's going on with the elementary-level social studies? Is there a document or anything that can be shared, or, just to know, just to be informed about what's happening with that? Because I don't remember hearing about it before, it doesn't mean we weren't told, but...
The social studies framework.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was adopted in the spring.
A framework or standards, just framework?
Just a framework.
A framework is-
They haven't developed the standards yet.
A framework is sparser, a sparser thing than standards, right? Okay. And why do, the other question is, why do we need to wait until New, if we know what the next-generation science standards are, why do we need to, and if we think they're good, if, why are we waiting for New York State?
We do think they're good. The problem is that right now, and this goes back to actually where we started the conversation, right now, all of the assessments are a reflection of the old- right now, all of the assessments are a reflection of the old.